I will be presiding over this meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I would like our juvenile court clerk, Lionel Matthews, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, we are black and behind the face of America. In this here republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start with awards and recognitions. So, do you need to call my telephone number? Okay, I will turn it over to Dr. Battle, Director of Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Player, and good evening, board members and everyone who's joined us this evening. I'm excited, I'm excited about recognizing several team MNPS members and community partners who contribute in their very own special way to making sure that every MNPS student is known. First up is Mark North, our high school athletics director. Mark, if you could come on up and let me talk about you for a minute while you stand in front of the crowd. Mark was actually honored by the Tennessee Secondary School Athletics Association, or T-S-S-A, last week with the A.F. Bridges Sportsmanship Award as a 2022-23 School System Administrator of the Year. So this award recognizes Mark's commitment to ethics, integrity, citizenship, and sportsmanship, in other words, to doing things the right way and helping set the standard for high school athletics across the entire state. And we know that setting that example at the top trickles down to what we see on the field and court each week. Mark, we'd like to take an opportunity to tell you congratulations on this well-deserved honor and thank you for everything you do to support and promote student athletes and all of our coaches and all of our school communities. Everyone, please join me in acknowledging Mark North and congratulations. And please come up for a photo after we do. We're so fortunate to have Mark leading our secondary athletics programs for MNPS. So next is Myron Franklin, the principal of Johnson Alternative Learning Center. Principal Franklin was elected last month to be the Region Three Director for NAEA, the National Alternative Education Association. Region Three covers six states: Tennessee, Kentucky, West Virginia, Ohio, Indiana, and Michigan. Let's give our first round of applause. This position on the NAEA board puts Principal Franklin at the center of learning and sharing about the best practices in alternative education across the country and gives MNPS a great opportunity to share and receive ideas that can help our at-risk youth. Principal Franklin, congratulations on your election and thank you so much for stepping up to lead at the regional and national levels. Please join me again in congratulating Principal Myron Franklin. Principal Franklin, please join us up front for a photo. All right, next up, I'd like to recognize our Human Resources Team. After MNPS won the Redefining American Healthcare Award from the Healthcare Leadership Council a few weeks ago, this award is for the groundbreaking My Weight Loss Health Bundle Program, which helps employees tackle weight loss in a holistic, accessible, affordable way. In fact, we made this program available at no out-of-pocket cost for our MNPS employees. Thanks to this proactive approach, our employees have lost more than 7,000 pounds and health concerns like diabetes are now less prevalent for our team MNPS members. Y'all, that's a big deal. Our Chair, Richlyn Erwod, remarked at the award ceremony in our MNPS Wellness Center a few weeks ago, "This also means improved quality of life, greater well-being, and enhanced productivity for our teachers and our support staff." Michael Freeman, Executive Vice President of the Healthcare Leadership Council, put it well in a press release about the award when he said, and I quote, "It is a shining example of what coordinated care should be: assisting patients with care navigation. It is enhancing health equity by making these services easy to access and at no cost to employees. And we believe that other organizations can replicate what you've done here and when they see the success metrics, should definitely do so." Congratulations and thank you to everyone from MNPS Human Resources and our partners at Vanderbilt Health Employer Solutions for all of the great work you've done to make this program possible for our employees. Let's get you all up here for a great photo and an opportunity for us to congratulate you on your great work and your award. So come on up, team. Congratulations to you. Thank you for your leadership, your hard work. Please join me in giving them a round of applause as they come forward. All right, our next group to recognize is the Coalition of Community Partners who have supported our students through the Books Brothers Initiative, which shows men of color reading books to our students. We're going to show a couple of videos about this wonderful project. We'll start with a story about My Brother's Keeper Nashville, which has spearheaded this work under the leadership of our very own Ashford Hughes, MNPS Executive Officer for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, as well as Davidson County Juvenile Court Clerk Lionel Matthews Jr. And then we'll see an example of Books Brothers in action. Please turn your attention to the monitors.
Black History Month, a new initiative hopes to give local youth a chance to achieve more in life. It's called My Brothers Keeper Nashville Alliance. News Channel 5's Kelsey Gibbs tells us what it can mean for young men across the community.
Let's go, Go Gordo!
Mentoring is a lot of things we need in life. It's telling me that I have to be a leader of each and everybody that's here today.
It's a lesson which will take these young men far beyond the classroom. It starts by walking in someone else's shoes.
They aren't just my team, they're family to me.
The first day of Black History Month.
The My Brothers Keeper Alliance launched right here in Nashville, formed in 2014 by President Barack Obama. The goal is to hit on a series of milestones like graduating high school and college with the help from men in the community.
My brother's keeper is, we need more people that keeps us somewhere that we can hope.
It's a mentorship for young men of color by giving them the beat to write the lyrics to their own song and their own truth while drumming up the courage to do what is right.
By choice, I chose to separate myself from what I'm used to seeing, even with negativity, from the people that I used to hang with.
Let's celebrate that, man.
With help from organizations like the Rill Program at the Oasis Center.
Reaching excellence as leaders.
And assistance from many others. It will go from boys to men.
I feel like being a leader and having a platform that I have to reach back and influence the younger generation is very important to me.
Former professional football player Chris Hope says it's about extending the same help once offered to him.
There's no person that has ever become successful in this world that didn't have somebody that mentored them or influenced them in a positive way.
Providing these young men with a sense of purpose and pride.
We are something in life. We can be something in life.
Kelsey Gibbs, News Channel 5.
My Brothers Keeper will start out focusing on three milestones: reading at grade level by third grade, graduating from high school ready for college and a career, and reducing violence and providing second chance opportunities. Black History Month, a new initiative hopes to give local...
I'm State Representative Harold Love Jr., and I'm here to read you a book today entitled, Who Will You Be? I want to thank United Way and the Nashville Public Library for the chance to read to you today. Who Will You Be by Andrea Pippins. My child, my little one, who will you be when you are grown? There's loving kindness in your eyes like your daddy's and boldness in your heart like your grandma. Will you be like them? Your cousin, Carolina, is loud and joyful. Will you be like her? Your brother watches the changing clouds. Will he do that with you? When you blow me a kiss, you are loving me like your grandpa. And your cousin's Gigi, who gives big hugs. Your big dark eyes take in the world. Will you be curious like your uncle? Find beauty in all that you see like Miss Jess. And be bound for adventure like your auntie. Amina makes cakes and pies. Will you do that too? Will you be compassionate like Alethandra? And, little one, will you be grateful, oh so grateful, like me? My wish is that you will be all these things and more. You will be your own self, but no one in the world has ever been like you. And this I know, my child, whoever you will be, I will love you forever. It has been my pleasure to read to you today, Who Will You Be by Andrea Pippins. And I hope as you continue to grow, that you indeed discover who you will be and know that whatever decision you make, whoever you decide to be, you will indeed be loved. Thank you again.
We are so excited about this partnership. Books Brothers is an exciting literacy resource for students in grades pre-K through 3. In fact, where the books align to our curriculum, our elementary literacy team placed these resources right into our very own scope and sequence. This is a partnership between My Brothers Keeper, Nashville Public Library, Ingram Charities, Nashville Soccer Club, and United Way of Greater Nashville, several of our excellent partners. Books Brothers brings together talented men of color from across the Nashville community to read books on camera so everyone can see and hear them. It is important that all young students can see talented men of color reading and showing commitment to our city's youth. It is especially critical for our young students of color to see and hear voices like theirs, sharing their time, talents, and care. The talent is superb. The video and audio quality are amazing. And together, they provide a rich, engaging experience for our young leaders. All videos are freely and widely available on YouTube. So let me say a big thank you to My Brothers Keeper, Nashville Public Library, United Way of Greater Nashville, Ingram Charities, and Nashville Soccer Club for everything you have done and will continue to do to promote reading, literacy, and equity to our students across the city. I'd like to invite you all up for a photo, including Councilman Preppit, who has joined us so that we can celebrate this great partnership and continue to reach more and more of our Nashville youth. Come on up and everyone, please join me in giving them a round of applause for their commitment. All right, before I turn it back over to Vice Chair Player again, I think all of the individuals and the organizations we have recognized tonight are just doing excellent work. We are so grateful for your leadership, for your partnership, embracing every student known and being on this journey with us of being the premier large school district in Tennessee and beyond. So again, we are forever grateful for your leadership and your partnership. With that, Vice Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Excuse me, Chair Player. Do you mind if I call for a point of privilege for just a moment?
Yes, the voice of goddess that came through. Like, who's the voice of God?
Thank you so much. I just really wanted to say thank you to all of those partners also. During my time at United Way, I had the awesome pleasure of working with these men of color, with these different partners to bring this to fruition during the pandemic. Just truly proof that adults in our community wanted to do something better for children. They wanted to lend their support, their time, their talent, or their treasure. And I'm just, I'm so grateful to see this and to know that it's still flourishing, it's on YouTube. So please check it out. I'm just, I'm just so excited. I hate I couldn't be there with you all, but congratulations and thank y'all so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the adoption of the agenda. I will entertain a motion to move the agenda. Okay, we moved there. Second?
Second.
Second. Dr. Sevier, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Approve.
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 Aye.
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 Aye. All right, the motion passed unanimously. We will now move on to Director's Report. We'll turn it on to Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Vice Chair Player, again. At this time, I will turn the microphone over to our Teaching and Learning and Curriculum Team. You will hear an update around our Fall Assessment tonight from our Chief of Academics in Schools, Dr. Mason Bellamy, our Executive Officer, Dr. David Williams, and our Executive Director of Research Assessment and Evaluation, Dr. Tina Stinson. I will turn the mic over to you, team. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, board members, Vice Chair. Thank you for this opportunity. And I do this every time. One second. There we go. No mouse. We are going to talk to you a little bit about assessments tonight, but before we do that, I want to ground us, as always, in our core tenets, focused outcomes and the signature initiatives. Tonight's presentation will align with the core tenets of identifying and eliminating inequities and creating, supporting, and engaging rigorous personalized learning for all students with outcomes of literacy and numeracy and initiatives of literacy reimagined and math. I don't know how to say that, as it turns out, math to the nth. To the nth power. Sometimes you see things and you don't hear them and you don't know. I'm going to ground us first in some of the types of district assessments we use, distinct and separate from our state assessments. The first type I'm going to talk about are our screeners. Those are skills-based screeners. You can see an example of them up there. We'll use them for universal academic and dyslexia screening. And the primary purpose is to tell us where additional support is needed. The second type, growth, the adaptive measures based on standards, are still part of our screening suite, so they do serve that screening purpose, A-reading and A-math. But they tell us how we are doing specifically related to a baseline and growth over the year. And then the third are achievement measures. These are standards-based benchmarks following the scope and sequence. And these tell us whether we're getting to the end goal of proficiency for our students and having learned and taught the standards in a given part of the year. So with that, I'm going to be talking about the growth and the achievement types of district assessments in this presentation. So, Fall 2023 Assessment Results. I won't read these out loud, but you can see our assessment window was the 10th through the 31st. For A-reading and A-math, our adaptive, standards-based assessments, we had a 98% participation rate, which is phenomenal. As was the case last year, and we'll talk a little bit about why this is, District A-math median percentiles were slightly higher than A-reading percentiles in nearly every grade. And we have some good news to share about the percentages of students scoring in the lowest quintiles for A-math and A-reading, namely that they decreased from when I presented these same data to you last year. And correspondingly, more students moved into the top two quintiles in these assessments. And finally, while progress is being made, we continue to work on gap closures. So this may look familiar to you from last year. These are our A-reading quintiles. I know I said this last year, but I do want to ground us again in what a quintile is, and specifically these quintiles. Quintiles are based on percentiles. In this case, percentiles on a test normed in 2019, A-reading, A-math. So nationally, about 20% of students would be, well, exactly 20% of each student would be in each of these student groups. What you see here are the percentage of students falling into the national quintiles. You can see that the pattern looks very similar to what I showed last year. However, the percentage of students in that bottom quintile and that second to the bottom quintile have reduced together by 4.1 point. The bottom quintile showed the most movement. 3% of students compared to last year are not in that quintile. This is the quintile that we would really see supports and interventions being used for students. And I also want to remind us that since this is part of a screener for disabilities and learning needs and tiered interventions, students are being given these assessments without accommodations. So we need to know, you know, does a student still need Read Aloud, for example? Or if they're a second grader, do they need Read Aloud? Things like that. So, and we moved 4.1% of students out of those bottom two and into the top two, with the middle quintile remaining the same from 2022. Math, you see a similar pattern. You will see, however, that we made even more improvement in math. We lowered the bottom two quintiles, or the percentage of students in each of the bottom two quintiles, and we increased the top two. Again, we think that ELA is a little lower simply because most of those accommodations are related to reading and being English learners and whatnot. So that's why you might see some of the patterns that you do see. And with that, I'm going to switch a little bit from quintiles to actual percentiles. These, again, will look familiar from last year. And this is the median national percentile by student group. So by definition, a median means that half the students, again, in the country in 2019 on this assessment scored above the 50th percentile and about 50% below. This shows us where each of our student groups did relative to that relative to that nationally-normed group. MNPS median percentiles improved by three points. So the all-students that you see is 26. It was 23 last year. Each of our student groups maintained or grew their median national percentile. Again, these are second to ninth graders in 2022 and then second to ninth graders in 2023. So that was, that was good news. Now we're going to look at A-math achievement by student group. Again, you see that median national percentile is a little higher for math. We didn't grow quite as much, but still really good growth, two points from Fall 2022 to Fall 2023. And most of our student groups did, in fact, maintain or improve their median national percentile. That being said, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but we are aware that there are gaps and are working on those gaps. But I want, before I turn it over to Dr. Williams, I do want to point out that what these data are showing, all four of the slides I just showed you, are showing us that compared to the cohort of second to ninth graders last year, that cohort of second to ninth graders this year is starting the year a little bit higher than, than last year's group. Thinking about our value-added gains last year, this means that, you know, most likely, our students maintained that growth, right? So we are starting our students at a higher level. Of course, we have new second graders in this cohort and some of our ninth graders last year dropped out. But by and large, these are the same students that we had last year. but by and large, these are the same students that we had last year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. David Williams to talk about our benchmark assessments.
Thank you, Dr. Stinson. Good evening. I do want to take a few minutes to provide some reminders about our benchmark assessments. We are in our second year of administering those in our district. The overarching goal with these assessments is to provide information to our educators about student learning with respect to the content that's taught each quarter. They are administered in all tested grades that you can see here on the screen. They're designed to take approximately 45 minutes, and that way they can fit inside a class period regardless of grade or subject area. I'm often asked in the question, are these assessments aligned? I usually take that opportunity to engage into a deeper conversation by asking, tell me what you mean by aligned. There are several ways that our team thinks about aligning our benchmark assessments to our state expectations. First and foremost, the assessments must be aligned to our grade-level standards found in our state standards, grade-level content found in our state standards. Next, they must cover a range of cognitive levels and ways of thinking. Next, when you look at a particular grade-level standards, you'll start to see some contours and some things stand out, and you'll notice that the standards focus in some areas more than others. That is to say, not all standards are necessarily of equal weight. Some are richer and more critical to learn than others. Next, our teams look at the state blueprint to see how content will be prioritized in our state assessment. Next, while multiple choice is still the most common item type, we do see multi-select items or multipart problems in grades three through five, where there's more than one correct answer that needs to be selected. In grades six and up, this was new last year. Our kids experience for the first time in middle school, we see what are called TEI, or Technology Enhanced Items. These items take advantage of technology when tests are taken online. They may ask students to do things like drag and drop their answers, type in the correct answer instead of selecting one, as in a text box, et cetera. It's important that we provide students this opportunity to learn how to answer these various item types that they will see on the state assessments. And finally, as benchmark assessments are given each quarter, they are aligned to the content that's taught and as outlined in our scope and sequence for each quarter. A little bit about ELA and math, I want to talk primarily about those two content areas this evening. Our ELA teams take great care to align the experience that students are having with instruction provided and what's being learned in class to reflect things like the topics they're learning, the types of text, whether it's a play, or a poem, or a biography, essential questions that are also found in our curriculum. And as mentioned, they also mirror the rigor and depth of our standards and the various item types that students will encounter. In mathematics, similarly, the benchmark focuses on the content that's learned each quarter, where standards are broad and may include multiple arithmetic operations or function types. Students are assessed specifically on what's being learned and taught that quarter. For example, maybe it's only addition and subtraction, or maybe it's only linear and exponential functions that are being taught according to the scope and sequence, and that's what students will experience on the benchmark. The State Department also provides evidence of learning statements for each standard, so we ensure that students have the opportunity to demonstrate the highest levels of mastery. Math benchmarks also include two parts or two sections. One is for calculator-active items and one is for non-cal calculator or calculator-inactive items. And again, we include a variety of item types where it makes sense. So this evening, I'll be providing some high-level updates and some trends from our first-quarter benchmark and ELA in math in grades three through seven, English II and Integrated Math I. This was administered September 27th through October 5th. So in grades three, start with ELA. Students were most successful responding to depth of knowledge. Webstep of knowledge is a way of classifying the types of thinking that's required. They were most successful in responding to Type II or Level II questions, skills and concepts. They also were most successful when they answered questions about a passage called Fish Frog Internal. And I also just did a screenshot over the side so you can see again that our ELA team takes care to align the types of passages they encounter on our benchmarks with what they're experiencing in class. In third grade, Module One, the module was called the C. And so the passage, at least one, we try to align to the types of things they're learning in class so that it feels seamless to the students. Content-wise, students were most successful determining the meaning of words and phrases as they're used in a text, particularly distinguishing from both literal, from non-literal language. And also using sentence-level context as a clue so that they could understand an unknown meaning or phrase, the meaning of an unknown word or phrase. Some challenges we saw in ELA was similar, as we expect and you'll see later in the presentation, struggling with non-traditional item types. And again, these can be multi-select or even multipart or two-point problems. They did struggle content-wise, using information that's gained from illustrations and words in the text to demonstrate that understanding, and then also producing simple compounded complex sentences. And the way that looks is you'll see a word, or excuse me, a sentence in a passage that's not very clearly worded, and students are supposed to select from among the answer choices that sentence rewritten in a more grammatically correct and clear form. Moving on to math in third grade, some successes we saw were answering recall questions. Again, Webstep of Knowledge Level One. We saw some success from students interpreting factors and products in whole number multiplication equations, and also demonstrating an understanding of division as an unknown factor problem. And that really gets to understanding the relationship, inverse relationship between multiplication and division. In grade three, again, challenges we saw were selecting correct answer choices when there are more than one correct answer, interpreting the dividend, divisor, and quotient in whole number division equations. So while they were successful doing that with the factors and products in multiplication equations, they struggled when it was flipped to division equations. Finally, the last challenge that I saw, again, high-level trends-wise in third-grade math, was understanding that shapes in different categories may share similar attributes, and those attributes can define a larger category. So for example, if I have a four-sided shape and all four of the sides are equal, that could be a square, it could be a rhombus, but then I also see other four-sided shapes like trapezoids or parallelograms or rectangles, and those could be broadly classified as quadrilaterals. Moving on to seventh-grade ELA, some successes that we saw were answering non-traditional item types, and this was a departure from what we've seen in the past and the break from the pattern that students were actually successful in seventh grade answering multi-select items where more than one answer is correct. We also saw some success analyzing what a text says explicitly and drawing some inferences, and then also citing evidence to support those inferences. We also saw success determining a central or main idea from a text and then analyzing its development over the course of a text. Some challenges that we saw, this is a different item type called EBSR or Evidence-Based Selected Response. These items can earn zero, one, or two points. Part A always asks you to respond to a question, and then Part B always asks you to justify that with textual evidence from the passage. You must get Part A correct in order to get Part B correct. You cannot get Part B correct without Part A. So they're tied together that way. They're worth up to two points, and that was a challenge for our seventh-grade students in ELA. We also had some challenge responding to, again, Webstep of Knowledge Level Two. Challenge analyzing relationships and interactions among individuals, events, or ideas in a text, and also had some challenge analyzing how the author establishes, conveys, and contrasts points of view of different characters or narrators within a text. Moving to seventh-grade math, we saw some success responding to non-cal calculator items. So as I mentioned, there are two parts, calculator and non-cal calculator. And this is important because we want to make sure that the students are doing the mathematical thinking and not relying on a tool. So in this case, students responded to non-cal calculator items. It means that they are certainly doing the thinking and answering those items well. Also, some of my favorite standards here personally, looking at proportional relationships was a key emphasis in seventh-grade math. They were to identify the unit rate through proportional relationships that can be represented in a variety of ways, whether that's a table, a graph, a diagram, equation, or verbal descriptions. And then also successful explaining on what a point (x,y) within the coordinate plane in the first quadrant that represents the proportional relationship with special attention to the point (1r), where r is defined as that unit rate. Some challenges that we saw, again, as I mentioned, the TEI items. Those are a little bit tricky. There's another layer of cognitive complexity that's layered on top of the student demonstrating their knowledge. So I may have the knowledge, but now I have to answer the question the way it's presented on the test, and that can be a challenge. Responding to Level Three questions were also a challenge according to Webstep of Knowledge. And then representing proportional relationship with equations. So graphically, numerically, students were successful. Equations is going to continue to be a challenge. That's the most difficult of the way when you represent proportional relationships. And then this standard is entering, knowing the formulas for area and circumference of a circle and using them to solve problems. So it's one thing to be able to apply, but this standard also says it's not going, you have to know the formula and apply it. And so that's what's key about that particular content. So moving into high school, English II, some successes we saw, and this was again a positive, responding to the most difficult categorization according to depth of knowledge is Level Three Strategic Thinking. We also saw some success analyzing points of view and author's purpose, how that shapes the content and style of different texts, which I'll just add, the name of our secondary curriculum is my perspectives. So being able to hold different perspectives at the same time and analyze them is great. Also saw some success demonstrating understanding of figurative language, verb relationships, and the nuance that can come in word meetings. Some challenges we saw, again, were the EBSR, and then select dropdown where it might be within a text, and I have to drop down just like we do when we're filling out online forms, question types of that nature. Challenges also responding to Type II questions, and then finally analyzing what a text says explicitly and then drawing those inferences, and also finding the most compelling textual evidence to support those conclusions, and that fits with the EBSR that I mentioned earlier. Getting out of breath, so let me pause for just a second. Thank you. But last but not least, moving on to Integrated Math I. Again, near and dear to my heart, successes were responding to Recall, Depth of Knowledge I questions. Success, not surprisingly, answering traditional multiple choice. And I do, again, want to point out that traditional multiple-choice questions are by far the majority of question types that are on our benchmarks and also what they'll experience in the state assessment. Interpreting parameters within a linear exponential function in terms of a context or word problem, students also performed well on those questions. And then also understanding that the graph of an equation in two variables does represent all solutions to that equation plotted in the coordinate plane. Some challenges were graphing. Students had two graphing questions on this particular benchmark in Integrated Math I where they had to plot points according to a depreciating exponential function, and then also plot a line given some constraints, and that was challenging. Again, the item type is in and of itself challenging. You have to know how to operate your mouse and the keyboard to make sure that's done, but that, again, is something that they need to be able to do successfully on the state assessment. Some other challenges content-wise, we're graphing equations with two variables in the coordinate plane, and then, again, comparing two different functions and their properties when they're represented in a variety of ways. All right, so in summary, there is some variability in student success, as we saw, with the different item types and the different types of thinking that's required. But generally, we do see students performing better on multiple-choice items than on the other item types. And I think that's just generally the way it is. Again, those multi, more complex types of questions do present an additional challenge to our students, to all students. Students also need to be expected to think in reasoning at varying levels of cognitive complexity. We talked about recall, analysis, synthesis, application. And while knowledge and recall is important, we've got to push past that and get into deeper levels of analysis. But that's not to say you only stay at the analysis. All types of thinking are valuable and important. And then finally, we do see some evidence that students are showing strong command of some critical content that's important for them to learn. But as we move forward in the year, again, second quarter now going into the third quarter, after the holiday break, there's still a great opportunity for students to learn moving forward. So in conclusion for our next steps, schools are equipped and empowered with a variety of data through different portals that they can use to monitor student progress and personalize learning experience for students as they move forward. Parents are also equipped with this data. So as Dr. Stinson mentioned, in grades two through nine, the A-math and the A-reading is presented as the national percentile. And then as we've done some analysis to make predictive claims about T-CAP performance based on statistical correlations, those reporting categories, the four levels, are in data warehouse for the benchmarks and our tested grades and subject areas. And we'll continue that further analysis to strengthen those claims between last year's T-CAP, this year's benchmarks, and then the upcoming T-CAP. And then finally, professional development from a variety of Support Hub staff, from the Research Assessment and Evaluation Department, the academics team, and of course, our executive directors and leading their schools to make sure we're interpreting their results and using them appropriately. So with that, Dr. Battle, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, team, for the Fall Assessment update. And I will turn it back over to you, Vice Chair Player.
Thank you, Dr. Stinson and Dr. Williams and Dr. Battle. If there are any questions or comments, School Board Member Tyler.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Okay, so it seems that in our younger grades, we're seeing that the struggle of answering non-traditional-type items is a skill that they get better at as they move along. Do we have anything in place right now where maybe in grade two, our students get practice with working with these types of questions so that by the time they hit third grade, they've already had some practice with it?
Yeah, that's a good point. All of our second-grade students can actually log in and access the items that we have. So for example, an elementary school could log in and access these items and provide them to the younger students, that that could help. That's a good point.
Is that something that we're coaching some of our teachers to do? Or is that not, I know there's so much limited time.
Yes, and it's also just that balancing act of providing some of that opportunity to see the types of items so they can develop that skill without going down the road of test prep. So that is something that schools could consider, but I would just encourage very limited use of that.
Okay. And then I also had a question about... So in moments where we see we're able to get very granular with what our challenges and successes are, when we, especially in math, we see a lot of you have to understand this concept to build off of it and to learn the next concept, and then you have to understand that to learn the next concept. And if you have a missing step, it can create larger problems the farther down the road you go. So when we have clear data on what our challenges are, how are our teachers spiraling back to ensure that our students are not missing that moving forward? I know, again, that we have very limited time, and it's hard to go back and reteach something when you're supposed to be moving forward. But I also understand that if we don't ensure that our students have that basic foundation, they can't move forward, and it's delicate.
Yes. No, it's a great question, and it certainly is delicate. So there's a couple of things. PLT time for students who are getting the math intervention. They can get that extra personalized support, whether it's through a skills-based intervention or remediation, so that there is a time and place for students to receive some of that additional support. I think when you're talking about community building or warm-up type questions, bell-ringer type questions, there's always an opportunity to spiral some of those important things back. The other thing that's important is that I have read research that even if a student may lack their multiplication facts, they can still access conceptual understanding of proportional relationships, for example. So we just have to be careful saying, I can't move forward until I master Point A. I can't get to Point B. That's not always true. A lot of times, as concepts are introduced in lower grades, they become skills for later grades, and students can still move conceptually through the grade-level content because what we don't want to have is students just get stuck and the teachers get stuck with them. So it's important to move forward and introduce the concepts that they need and try to find ways to spiral back to those important foundational skills.
I know some of our PLT programs allow for the students to meet them where they are, whether it's at a higher level or a lower level, wherever they are. Do we have any ability to look more deeply at which students are using, like, for example, some of our students who are working at a higher level and would benefit from moving ahead, moving forward, and having access to newer material? But the program doesn't necessarily give them information about why they might have missed something that's a little bit harder? And I can see how that, I've talked to several parents who've had some concerns about, well, if she understood why she had missed it, she could figure it out and move on, then she'd get it. And I think that iXL does that a little bit. Trying to remember which one does and which one doesn't. There's a little, one of them gives you reasons for why you missed it, and one of them does not. And so you can't learn if you don't know why you missed it. So how are we making sure that we're meeting our kids, not just during PLT, but that what we're giving them during that PLT time is also helping them move forward?
Yeah, and iReady is the one that we use commonly across the district. Other schools may have iXL as an additional program. But certainly, when those programs are implemented during PLT, just as there are literacy, it's not just on the computer. There's always going to be a hybrid approach. There should always be a blended model where the student may be working independently on the platform, but they're always going to be reinforced and supported by in-person educators. That should always, so they can diagnose and also help them understand why they missed something and move forward. That should absolutely be the case.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. That should be the case. I also know the reality of being in a classroom with a bunch of kids who have so many different needs and not physically being able to get to literally everyone in the 30 minutes that we have or 45 minutes for PLT. So again, I don't want to, I mean, obviously, we want to have best practices and what we expect from our teachers, but we also have to be realistic about what can you actually do during this time? you actually do during this time and how can we provide the best support. So.
So I was just going to add, I actually observed in a classroom today during PLT where this was exactly happening. The teacher didn't even know it was coming. And you know, what you typically will see are students working independently at their own pace inside the platform. The teacher had three or four students grouped around her working on a specific skill based upon the information from the program that they're working in. And so while we are all having to be smart and efficient about our time, I just today observed a teacher doing this extremely well and in a space where every student's needs essentially were being met because of what they were doing, either individual on their computer or in small group time with their teacher. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we have teachers who are doing this extremely well, given the kind of student-teacher ratio we have, given the training that they have and understanding the hybrid model that truly does exist. And so that is something that is expected and we continue to support around to make sure that we are being responsive to where there may be some skills gaps with our students.
And for our teachers who might be struggling with that, do they have the opportunity to go watch a teacher who is very skilled at that so that they can figure out how to do it better?
Absolutely. And I know of several examples where either instructional leadership teams or principals are recommending observations for models and having this modeled in professional learning experiences. I know we've talked about it in our PLNs and when we brought our coaches together. So absolutely.
Okay, great.
The other point I would just add quickly, briefly, if you'll allow us, if I have 18 students in a classroom, whether it's a PLT or general classroom, the misconceptions that students have are fairly predictable. And so it's oftentimes not that there's 18 misconceptions. There are probably only three that are happening among the students. And I just need to find, again, those groups of kids and address those misconceptions. There's generally not 18 misconceptions for the same challenge.
Thank you.
All right. School board member, Harold Block?
So I think I'm understanding correctly that the, the A reading and A math data, those are the assessments we administer, right, just at the beginning of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
As, as screeners in some way, but.
They're part of our larger screening suite.
Right. And so the, the fact that we saw the improvements over last year at this time is in a lot of ways, just a reflection of having made some gains last year, but also potentially having not really lost much over the summer. Am I interpreting that more or less correctly?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, that's a fair, fair interpretation. Okay. No, yeah. I think I ask that in part because I'm curious about promising scholars and just if there's anything we could know about promising scholars from this, I would, the answer to that question might be no, but I just, I find myself wondering that.
So I believe Dr. Stinson's department in conjunction with Chief Chen's department have some internal studies on that. That's just been released at very high levels right now. So I don't want to reveal too much before we're ready, except to say that I think we have some, some results that show promise in our promising scholars program.
And more significantly, in some ways, I mean, that's most important, right? But that also that you guys are looking at it and schools are looking at it. And so we know where things in promising scholars may have worked and may not have worked as well so that we could make improvements as we're going forward.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Um, great. That was question, sort of question number two. I'm, this, this is my, I don't know how to, how you all might be able to answer this one or not. But so the gaps we see are just even looking at the initial A reading, A math scores are pretty big. And I'm, I'm wondering if you have any sense of how those gaps, the gaps that we see in our district compare with other districts compared nationally?
So I'll let Dr. Stinson talk about how, if she has any comparison points for nationally, we obviously, with the division of schools, we concern ourselves with closing the gaps internally, right? And so we look at the promising data in particular, those quintiles and moving children out of quintile one and two into the higher. They can't cross proficiency if they don't move out of those ranges first. And so then when we look at benchmarks, obviously we're talking about acquisition of standards versus those skills. And so I'll let Dr. Stinson answer your basic question of do we have data as to how we compare nationally? I just wanted to start by saying that's obviously the first thing we look at. And the power of the assessment suite is that every school can drill into every data point for every kid and answer the question, where is this child compared to where they were this time last year or this time last week? And they do a very good job of that. So I'll let Dr. Stinson answer the national question.
Yeah, I, by the way, just cheated while we were sitting here. I didn't realize this. We're out and went in the parent dashboard and looked at my own students' scores. So I do know that this is also possible for parents that are out there and can go in and find the information right now if you'd like.
Yes. And the short answer is that, as I mentioned, the, the norms were created in 2019. They were pretty careful to have a wide range of students and student abilities. But two things, one is we do not at this time have data on how students are performing this year nationally on FastBridge. However, I would be amenable to like asking Fast if they have any, you know, illuminate, who's the parent company, if they have anything they can share with us so that we can gather that information and talk about it, you know, either at a further board meeting or in a work session or just individually. And to reiterate, Dr. Bellamy's point, you know, the, the data are most powerful at that student level and in the hands of the teacher looking at their progress. And we have all kinds of tools in use to see that students are not slipping percentile-wise wherever they start from. So that's a non-answer.
No, no, that's helpful. I mean, I think the idea is just to have a sense as we are looking to make progress on closing gaps, you know, where are we in that, not just on our own progress, but sort of generally speaking, how are we doing? And national might not be a good comparison. I'm just trying to get a, I'm trying to get a sense of, gaps exist in a lot of places. We all would like for them not to. We all want to be making progress on that. But I, I don't, I don't know that I have a good sort of mental image in my mind of how to compare that as we're trying to move forward on it. And then, so on the, on the benchmarks, or sorry, on the A reading, A math and benchmarks, on, on those, I know, Dr. Battle, one of the things within sort of the strategic goals for the district and the focus outcomes is to, is to see where more than 50% of students are making progress on their benchmarks. Meeting or exceeding on, on benchmark, right? Fast A.
That one is A reading and A math.
Sorry, I'm getting my things confused. And so we would, the first time we would expect to see anything like that would be in the winter. Is that correct?
It would be in the winter screening, which we would be able to report on usually in February.
Okay, great. Just, just to set expectations correctly for myself and anyone else who's paying attention to those numbers and that data. And then the last question I have is just, one of the things that we had just talked about in evaluation at our last meeting was fifth and eighth grade last year, which I'm not sure if that means that, you know, we sort of are trying to pay attention to fifth and eighth grade this year, or if it's sixth and ninth, or, but I would just, if there's anything that you all learned from this round of assessments on that and, and what, what things, if there's other stuff that we're pivoting toward with those, I'd be interested in hearing.
So we are able to look at benchmark data at school level, at the grade level, across the district at grade levels. You have to be very careful in making interpretations broadly that way because the, the tests are rather short and they do cover sometimes different content as our scope and sequence has changed. So even looking at the group of the cohort of students that went from fifth to sixth grade and saying last year they were, let's say arbitrarily 30%, and now they're 32, is not necessarily accurate to say they're 2% better, right? Depending on how many questions were on that test and where the cut score falls, the difference between getting seven questions right or eight can wildly swing, swing a district percentage, especially when you're looking at a grade level across. So it's difficult to look year to year with our benchmark system that particular way because of a lot of nuances in the data. So that's why we encourage all of our schools to drill down. My EDs drill down by their network. They put their principals in groups within their network to look at where were you this time last year, both where were third graders last year to where are third graders this year? And then where were third graders last year to those kids that are now fourth graders? So we do exactly what you're asking for, in particular at the school level where it's the most powerful, across the district level. And again, even at our schools, I would caution them and say, don't just assume that 30 last year and 30 this year for the same grade level of students means that everything's fine. Like that, that, those tests are wildly different. That's why you need to look at the cut scores and determine based off, off the, the work that illuminate, that REE and all those folks are doing and looking at each of these benchmarks almost as the individual data point that they are. So we really hesitate and urge folks to, if you're going to go into a comparison route that way, to really know what you're doing, understand the two different tests and be careful what kind of judgments you make about that. The more powerful thing to do is to look at this point in time and say, as of October 6th, this group of students mastered this level of content in this way. And then you just formulate your teaching for November and December's the same way, right?
Yes. Yeah. I guess it's just like, I would assume then, so what, what things do we use to try and track some of those items from last year that we, we had as concern?
So in particular, the grade bench you're talking, we can make some statements and I do have some data that points to, we should feel pretty good about where we're at right now as a whole compared to where we were this time last year, right? And that's an obviously a generalized statement, right? When we look at problem areas that we had last year, this is the reason that IM data was presented to you tonight or the IM trends, right? Because we recognize that's a place where we struggled last year. That's why English 2 was presented to you this evening, third grade because the retention law. So we absolutely dig in there. We know what the, the item types our kids tend to struggle with. And so we layer those things into the scope and sequence into our professional development for our principals, for our coaches proactively. And then when we get the data coming from this year's assessment, we can react accordingly to how they did there.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other board member? Board member trans, excuse me?
Yeah, I was wondering if there were any accommodations for non-native English speakers because that could possibly explain the large gap in the reading benchmark.
Thank you for that question. Very insightful question. So on A reading and A math, the graphs that you saw that were horizontal, right? Yeah, where we showed the gaps. Thank you. Those tests actually do not allow for accommodations because they are part of our screening suite and they are looking to determine exactly what skills might be lacking. So when you see a very large gap, for example, between EE students and the average, the average national percentile for a student, that is not accommodating for a child that may have, have a reading disability. Benchmarks do allow for those accommodations. And so the benchmark data that Dr. Williams presented to you, any child that has an accommodation, be it an English learning accommodation or an EE accommodation or a 504 accommodation, they would have received that. So the information we get about their standards acquisition on benchmarks, we can really take out of the, take out whether or not they were struggling to access the content and we can, we can understand their standards acquisition. For the A reading and the A math, those accommodations are not occurring because the nature of that test is that we need to identify the gaps and what, what's existing there. Thank you.
Any other board member?
I have one question request. So if we would have maybe like a 30 or 60 second soundbite to relate this to the layperson, how will we kind of sum up this assess, this assessment? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, my soundbites come in those highlights that we, that we had for you that overall right now, this group of students are by and large doing better at this point in the year than our group of students were last year. And those students last year were by and large doing better than the ones before it. And so we have a long history of making solid growth here in Metro Nashville. We're going for a three-peat. And it, it's going to happen. We're going to three-peat. And the trends right now, to me, the soundbite is that the trends are showing we're well on our way to a three-peat.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure Dr. Battle probably has a better way of saying it.
It works for me. I know sometimes, you know, we who do this for a while and we get immersed in jargon that we get into and then sometimes we're like, what, how schools are doing? So be able, we can repeat for people to digest exactly how well we're doing, the growth that we're doing, that there's steady progress and that's steady and solid that hopefully we can reinforce this as leaders from the district and as elected leaders into the communities.
And just one thing I want to add, it does give an indication that a lot of the key strategies and initiatives we have in place are working for our students. And so again, I want to charge this board, this community to come alongside us, to help us deepen our practices and to be laser focused and to decrease any distractions to our educators in being able to double down on the strategies and the practices that we are seeing over time are working for our young people. And, you know, if we can grow every student every year, that is extremely positive for us. And we'll see the impact of that in both growth scores and success rates. And so come alongside us, help us maintain a laser focus on the right things that work for our students. And please, please, please help us to decrease any distractions from that work so that we can pour into our young people and into our educators, both certificate and support staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Battle, my apologies. We neglected to go to our last and perhaps one of the most important slides of How Can Our Board Support? So it's in your packet and it's on the screen. We just continue to ask for your support and the use of a comprehensive assessment system. Be a champion for our teachers, which you always are, teachers, principals, and school communities, and continue to advocate for transparency in our accountability systems utilized by the state. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you. We have.
Can I just add one thing on that last point? Continue to advocate for transparency and measurements that include student growth all the time in every aspect of our accountability systems.
Thank you. School board member, Nabata King? Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you for informing us. And you can take your seats. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Now we'll move on to public participation. I believe we have three people who are asked to speak. We ask that you speak on a topic that is germane or that's on the agenda, and you will have three minutes to speak. So we will start with Mr. Caleb Taylor. Mr. Caleb Taylor, going once, going twice. Okay. Ms. Sophia Payne?
Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair of Player and members of the board. My name is Sophia Payne and I am a senior at Hillsborough High School. I'm here on behalf of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is a part of the larger national sunrise movement. First, I wanted to address the contract with JJCA. Then I will explain why I'm here on behalf of the Sunrise Movement. Later, I will wrap up my comments. I wanted to first acknowledge the work that the MMPS School Board is doing to improve the classrooms and overall facility at Percy Priest Elementary School. I'm so thankful for the work the MMPS School Board and other stakeholders have put in during the last couple of years to establish a targeted plan for creating additional space for the predicted growing number of students at Percy Priest. I understand how important it is for the School Board to focus on the needs of students like myself to improve unique learning experiences and support character development. Specifically, I was excited about the future of MMPS schools when I realized that current school renovation projects like the one at Percy Priest are strategically implementing LEED certification and improved energy efficiency. I think it is crucial that we continue to take action to address many of the local and global environmental problems we are seeing, like an increase in flash flooding in Nashville. With this in mind, there's a need for further environmental initiatives in our school district, which brings me to why I'm here today. Our group of students at Hillsborough form a part of the National Sunrise Movement, which is currently advocating for passing the Green New Deal for schools at the congressional level. Locally, however, we're hoping to collaborate with the MMPS School Board in increasing sustainability across the school district. At Percy Priest, for example, this could include using the new school construction to address aspects of the Nashville waste issue or to implement outdoor educational opportunities through pollinator garden creation. You may be asking, why the School Board? What role do we have in this? The School Board is in a unique position in that it has the connections and resources to make a more meaningful impact than we could ever make on our own, especially through existing initiatives like the rebuilding of Percy Priest Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Hayden, Mr. Hayden Luggins?
Good evening, Dr. Adrian Battle, Chair and members of the board. My name is Hayden Legends and I'm a sophomore at Hillsborough High School. I'm here on behalf of Sunrise Hillsborough, which is part of the larger national sunrise movement. Our goal is to make schools safer and environmentally friendly, and we can only do that with your help. In early September, I imagine you are familiar with this, a natural gas leak happened at Old Central Elementary School, and the students had to be temporarily relocated to Good Listville Elementary School, which is about 2.5 miles away. I imagine I say this for everyone involved. We'd like to thank you for handling the situation as well as you did. Being able to relocate that many students at such a short notice was an extremely hard job and we're thankfully pulled it off. job and we're thankfully pulled it off. A good school board is very important for a community and all schools and we're very glad to see we have one that cares. Despite handling it well, it is easy to imagine learning was affected for the students. And because of climate change, situations like this are happening more because of bad or harsh weather, but on a more personal and smaller scale. Climate change makes natural disasters more common. This increased storms and tornadoes caused power outages and maybe even destruction of houses. This can prevent students from staying home, having fresh food, having clean clothes and even being able to do the schoolwork. My own friend lost power for 29 days straight after a blackout. We know that you value equity and education and this, this is a step towards it because our neighborhoods are affected by these natural disasters and want to make sure these students have the same opportunities as everyone else. I mention this because Sunrise Hillsborough would love to work with you on future projects and current projects like the old center renovations and our cluster and district. We're part of a national initiative to ask schools and school boards to raise the bar on environmentally sustainable practices and provide a safe, eco-friendly, eco-friendly place for students to thrive. This could look like locally resourced foods, disaster housing for students and building new schools with LEED certification. Sunrise is about uniting for the good of our community and the health of our planet. We see that you're already taking major steps in this direction and we'd like to commend you yet challenge you all to do more. We hope that there can be a space for student input or involvement in future projects. Our goal is to make schools safer and more eco-friendly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Luggins. That is the end of public participation. We will move on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Chair, um, school board member Nabahak Kenny, is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Hayes. Mays. Mays, thank you. Got that. I picked that up. Okay, all in favor? We still have to call a roll even though, okay, okay. Ms. Dr. Sevier, we do roll call, please? Yeah.
Aye.
Smays?
Aye.
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 Okay, five ayes, it passes. We will move on to board reports. We do not have any board reports because we had no committee meetings prior to this school board meeting. We will move on to announcements. We will go with District 3. Nope. Oh, yeah, because she's gone too. District 4.
Good afternoon. I just have a couple of announcements. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Stinson and Dr. Williams for your presentation on data as well as board members for the questions that you raised today. Thank you, Dr. Battle, and your leadership and the work that you are doing with your team to support our district. Truly appreciate it. I do want to highlight a week ago, two weeks ago, we attended the Council of Great City Schools Conference in San Diego, California, where I was able to witness the great leadership within this district, do presentations about a lot of the wonderful things and great things that we are doing in the district and leading the conversation across the nation. If you're not familiar with the Council of Great City Schools, it's a convening of large urban public schools across the country. And so to be in the company of, of, of large public schools or school districts across the country and to lead some of this work with MNPS is, is just a great opportunity. I was also able to present with Mr. Ashford Hughes at that conference as well as Chair Errol Rod was able to present with Dr. Battle in some of this work. So it was a great conversation and, and as I always echo, it's really great to see that MNPS is leading the nation in a lot of the work that we are doing and, and really being recognized at that level. Secondly, I do want to announce McGavick High School has a play coming up, starting this week on Friday, the 17th. The Raider Theater presents 12 Angry Jurors from the original teledrama by Reginald Rose. It will be hosted at McGavick High School starting on Friday, November 17th at 7:00 PM, Saturday, November 18th. There will be two shows at 2:00 and 7:00 and then on Sunday, November 19th at 2:00 PM. Also, lastly, there will be, uh, the Tennessee School Board Association Annual Conference will convene this week and several of us board members will be attending that conference. So we look forward to convening with school board members across our state, learning more about what's going on in our state, a, as well as opportunities to advocate on behalf of MNPS and some of the issues that we are experiencing in our state. Two things I want us to keep in mind is, one, if you are not familiar with it, please make sure that you are researching and looking at our state relinquishing federal funding for education. This is an important topic that they are currently convening and discussing. I don't know how plain I can put it as it being a really bad idea, but it is something that they are considering and as community members and as taxpayers, we really, really need to look at that and look at the implications it will have on schools and school districts as well as your children and what that impact looks like. And the second thing that, that is very important as well is the state's move to a A through F grading system that will be impacted in our district as well and what that means for children within our schools. So those are two important policy decisions that are happening in our state. Please look up that information. Please research it. I ask all of our community to be involved in this and advocate with your state and local officials related to this. And if you have family outside of Davidson County, I encourage you to talk to them, to talk to their legislators as well. This is, this is not only going to impact MNPS, but this is a statewide issue that will impact communities across our state and children across our state. So thank you and you guys have a wonderful, will we see you before Thanksgiving? We won't see you until after Thanksgiving, so have a wonderful Thanksgiving with your family and community. Thank you.
District 6.
Sorry, I thought we were going to go in order, but five is not here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Okay, I just have a few announcements. First, I want to give a big shout out and congratulations to several of our cheer squads from across MNPS. They competed in the state dance and cheer championships at MTSU on November 4th. Third Good Marshall Middle School, Kane Ridge High School, Antioch High School and Overton High School are the ones that I know of. There may have been others. Hillsborough was, oh, look. And Hillsborough High School. And a big shout out to Coach Davis at Antioch High School. This was the first time ever that Antioch High School competed. And let me tell you something, I was so proud of all of these young ladies. They did such an amazing job.
I totally saw that face. She's just making sure you're right about the Antioch thing.
You gotta watch them. You gotta watch them. All right. And a big shout out, thank you so much to the students and educators at Stratford-Stem Magnet High School for the invitation to participate in the Women in Law Panel Discussion this morning. I participated with two additional colleagues. It was extremely fun for me and it was especially fun because I was able to make the connection between law, policy and education. So I think that we are going to be in good hands with these future lawmakers. And it was a great group of young ladies, so thank you for that. And this past week, we held the Antioch and Kane Ridge Joint Cluster PAC Meetings. We had several parents that were present and they were excited about reforming the PAC in Southeast Nashville. And thank you to my colleagues, Dr. Nabahak Kenny and Ms. O'Hara Block for attending and sharing information about the PAC meetings that are happening in their clusters right now. I think that was a big selling point for the parents that attended that meeting. We will have future meetings and those will be announced via my socials and via newsletters, so be on the lookout for that. And I wanted to put a reminder out that the Nashville MLK Day Youth Committee is still looking for students to join the planning committee. The youth committee will begin meeting weekly each Wednesday at 4:30 after Thanksgiving via Zoom, so it's a virtual meeting time. And the meetings will be held leading up to the MLK Day Youth Symposium event on January 13th. This year, the youth symposium will be held at MLK Academic Magnet School from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. And students who participate in the youth committee planning committee will earn community service hours. So any of those seniors out there who are in, still in need of community service hours, this is a great opportunity for you to get your, your service hours. You can reach out to the, to join, if you are interested in joining, send us an email at NashvilleMLKDayEvents@gmail.com and we will get you signed up for the meetings and the future planning. And you will also have an opportunity to participate in all of the MLK Day Week of Events activities. Additionally, the MLK Day Week of Events will kick off with the annual MLK Day Gala on January 11th at the Cal Turner Center on the campus of Mahari Medical College. Tickets for this event are on sale and can be obtained via Eventbrite. Information on all of the MLK Day events can be found on the MLK Day website. It's MLKDayNashville.com. Events will begin on January 11th and with the annual gala and wrap up on January 15th with the annual convocation program that will be held on the campus of Tennessee State University, where we will have our featured keynote speaker, Ms. Nikki Giovanni. Go ahead, say it, Fiskite.
Fiskite, yes, thank you very much.
All the events, with the exception of the gala, are free and open to the public. And in the spirit of the season, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, but let's just be mindful that not everybody can make mac and cheese. This is not the time to start testing your mac and cheese skills. If you are not that person who can make it, stay away from the mac and cheese and turn it over to somebody who can. But happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Enjoy your holiday.
Thank you very much. District 7, I do have any announcements. District 8?
Can the same go for mashed potatoes?
Yes.
I feel very strongly about mashed potatoes.
Yes.
March 27th at Hillsborough High School at 6:00 PM, I'm going to be hosting a meeting to talk about the proposed changes to magnet school policy. I have put that out on social media, sent it to PTOs in the area, anyone who I have received an email from about this particular issue and any other way I can think of to let folks know, but March 27th, 6:00 PM at Hillsborough High School, right now in the community room, but we might be, we might have to change location given interest that in the meeting.
March 27th?
Did I say March? I kept saying that. I did that, it's November. November 27th. I'm really well prepared, extraordinarily well prepared. I have done this multiple times and you know the reason why. And this is actually, it's not, because March 27th is in my head because that was the day of the Covenant shooting. And so it has stuck in my head and I've done this unfortunately several times, so my sincere apologies, November 27th. I wanted to just quickly thank Hayden and Sophie Rose for coming to talk about the sunrise movement and, and also for supporting work that's already happening at a couple of our schools and, and being concerned about the work that we'll do going on, going forward to make sure that our, our buildings are, keeping track of, of the environment so that they have an environment to enjoy as they are older. Thanks to Councilman Prepti for his involvement in the Books Brothers Initiative. That was super cool. I'm very excited about that. And I, lastly, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Battle and her team because regularly in my head, when I see presentations about data, all I can think is know where you are, but don't stay there. So thank you for the constant reinforcement of that as a mantra, know where we are, but don't stay there. So that's it, thanks. So again, November, this month, the 27th, the Monday after Thanksgiving, 6:00 PM, Hillsborough High School in the community room. Did I say it correctly that time?
You did.
Okay.
I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. District 9?
Yes, so Gower Elementary is having their book fair this week and it started yesterday. It'll go through the rest of this week and they need more grocery bags for students to bring home their purchases. So if you are a Gower family and you have some Publix or Kroger bags laying around, please send those in with your child tomorrow so that other students will be able to bring their, their purchases home. West Mead is having their family literacy night on November 28th from 5:00 to 7:00. They'll have their book fair at that time. That'll be going on. There'll be other fun opportunities that evening. If you are a West Mead family, I highly recommend you come out on that date. And then finally, just a moment to celebrate our orchestra students. Orchestra students from Lawson, NSA, McGavick, MLK and Hume Fog joined together to form the MNPS Honor Orchestra earlier this week at Lawson High School. And I'm really proud that our best orchestra, orchestra student members were able to use our state-of-the-art facilities at Lawson and the sound was superb as well as the playing. So just wanted to take a minute and celebrate them. I know how hard they have to work to get to that point and they deserve some recognition for that, that hard work.
Thank you. Student member Tran?
Hi, I just wanted to reiterate that mental health is very important, taking care of yourself is very important, both physically and mentally, so you can be okay emotionally. I'm still working on that too, but everyone else here should work on that as well. And I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving break, even though the origins of that holiday are questionable. Everyone has a happy holiday, enjoys their time off.
Thank you. School board member Mitchell?
Been a minute, y'all. So glad to be back. Um, so I want to firstly, you know, apologize for my, uh, my tardiness. Basketball season is coming, y'all, and Hillsborough cheer is real. So I made it. And so, yes, you know, I'm always going to say, support MNPS athletics. These students work very, these student athletes work very, very hard to manage their time, to balance, and they put a lot of effort and so we need community support always. With that, I was invited to Nashville School of the Arts to see their play, Bright, their musical, excuse me, Bright Star, which they did a phenomenal job. So of course the athletics would also support the arts. It is play season, as Dr. Nabahak Kenny said. So go support, go look at your school, your local schools. Nine times out of 10, they have some production going on right now. So go support them in Nashville, NSA, Nashville School of the Arts. They did such a phenomenal, fantastic, but both, they did such an amazing job. And I really, really would love to see investment in them because I feel like Nashville School of the Arts, our art school should be the pinnacle of arts in metro. I mean, they don't have a state-of-the-art Lawson theater. They don't, they don't, y'all, y'all got a nice theater, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, I know we're working to get everybody on Lawson level. I feel like everything would compare Lawson, but you know, it's a nice school. But, you know, I would love to see some investment into NSA because they did such a phenomenal job and the arts are so important and such an integral part of be creating well-rounded students and well-rounded people. And then I know board member Mays is always going to talk about her Antioch school, so, you know, I do have to say, I always know, you know, you're going to go hard, but.
I'm ready to go.
Mays, Mays, Hillsborough and Overton were all at the cheer competition too, just saying. I know, you know, so your Antioch and Kane Ridge, they did good, but we were there too. And then of course I want to acknowledge my Sunrise Hillsborough lovelies, you guys did an amazing job. And over the last month, just going to different summits and different events, I've been meeting so many amazing students and it is always so awesome to see students using their voice and advocating for what they care about and what's important to them. So kudos to you all and kudos to all of the MNPS students out there who are doing great things. So I hope everyone has a great week, a great Thanksgiving holiday, and I will see you guys next time.
Yes. Cheer me.
I apologize. I meant to say this earlier. Going off of what board member Nabahak Kenny said, tomorrow is the last meeting this week of the Joint Working Group on Federal Education Funding. There will be two meetings tomorrow, one at 9:00 AM and one at 1:00 PM. Both meetings will be held in the Senate Hearing Room. So if you're interested in listening in on those meetings, they will be, they will be streamed live, but you can also go down to Capitol Hill and sit in that chamber and listen to the foolishness yourself if you so choose to.
I hope everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving break with your chosen family or your real family, and happy Thanksgiving, and this meeting's adjourned.